Call to order the May 6, 2021 Business Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, please do call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board; Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call on Zoom, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
There you go. Thank you. In the hearing room, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our meeting agenda today, I want to follow up with conversations on Tuesday around a terrible incident that happened at the Metro Oregon City Transfer Station. Let me reiterate that I and Clackamas County absolutely condemn racism, racist acts, and symbols of racism. This board has a resolution condemning racism, and we are just as committed to that resolution today as we were when it was signed. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. Any person who has arrived in person, please pick up this wonderful brochure that staff has prepared, how to do public testimony before the Board of County Commissioners. Our folks who have called in on Zoom or the telephone, you have provided one via email, and it's just very nice tips just to help you through the process and alleviate any anxieties and expectations that you might have. Gary, would you call the first item, please?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. First, we have ice storm updates. Presenting today is a new face to you. That's Daniel Nibauer. He is currently the Deputy Disaster Manager in the Department of Disaster Management. Go ahead, please, Daniel.
All right. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Smith. Giving an update on the ice storm, we have good news. The President approved a declaration on May 4, and the declaration period runs from, we'll be covering costs from 11 to February 15. Disaster management will be working with county departments on that process. Cities, special districts, and other eligible applicants will work directly with FEMA on their costs in different projects. In addition to response costs, this also means that we have another round of hazard mitigation funds that are available, and we'll be working with FEMA on getting those projects. Debris management is also continuing to move forward. In addition to the continued removal, we have started chipping some of the debris as well.
Well, that's great news. Absolutely great news. I look forward to more reports on how FEMA is going to assist our efforts in that.
Any questions, Commissioners, for Daniel? All right. And I've emailed you this, Commissioners, but Daniel will become interim director of the Disaster Management Department on June 1 because Nancy Bush has been promoted to become the county's first county operating officer on June 1 as well. So Daniel will start to present. Yes. Daniel will be presenting with you this month in transition, so you'll be seeing more of him going forward. Thank you, Daniel. Next, COVID-19 updates with Nancy Bush, currently Disaster Management Director for 30 more days, less than that, and Philip Mason-Joyner, our County Public Health Director. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. So while Christina is pulling up the slides, I just want to talk a little bit about, we did get $2.7 million that came in from the state. That is part of that statewide distribution that the governor said 20 million would be coming down to the state, or to the counties. So that is a part of that. So the good news is, is that we already have an agreement in place that was signed in December, and this is going to be an amendment to that agreement. So hopefully, we can get things moving very quickly. Sarah Ekman already has the agreement in with our County Counsel. They're taking a look at it, and we're having discussions on how the dollars will, we know how they will be spent because they do have to go directly to businesses. We just have to figure out how we're going to get it to the businesses. So that is really good news, and that is in, of course, direct cause of COVID. So we'll get moving on that. All right, Christina, thank you. So next slide, please. So our risk level metrics, so for the seven-day total of COVID-19 patients that are going into hospitals, is now at 351, which, of course, is under that, over that 300 mark. The percentage of change, though, is under 15%, and this is why we are now going back into high-risk from extreme risk from last week. So that is good news because that hospital bed metric has not been met. Next slide, please. So the county metrics for the cases per 100,000 is 283.4 here in Clackamas County, and our test positivity rate is 7.7. Again, those would be putting us in extreme risk if it wasn't for the hospitals, that measure going down. Next slide. So the case count this week is 648. As you can see, it has continued to rise over the past several weeks, and we still do have a lot of cases coming here as well as in the region. And on the next slide, it shows here in Clackamas County, we now have 16,869 total cases with a total of 209 deaths, and we had, that is in addition to two deaths from last week, and 668 additional cases from last week. Multnomah County is at 37,445. They were up, I'm sorry, and their total deaths is 577, and they were up over 1,000 cases this past week, and they have additional three deaths. Washington County is at almost 25,229 deaths. They are up 617 cases from last week and with zero additional deaths. So for the next slide, again, this is the statewide COVID-19 patients that are in hospitals, and you can see there that we do have that, it's coming down from last week at this point. So that is on decline, at least from last week. And from there, I'm going to turn it over to Philip.
Thank you, Nancy. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. The public continues to be very interested in what we're seeing through our contact tracing efforts locally around outbreaks. Nancy mentioned we have over 600 cases within the county, 65 active outbreaks we are investigating currently. This is a little bit more detail in terms of the different types of settings that we're seeing outbreaks. So it is good to see that long-term care facilities have dropped. You can see the school-related outbreaks at 27, and then a whole different variety of workplaces, including food processing, landscaping, manufacturing, restaurants, and so on. I would say, just as I mentioned last week, that this data is incomplete. We're still only able to complete full interviews, able to get a hold of around 50, roughly 50% of our cases to do the interviews. So participation in contact tracing is really important, so we have the full story of what's happening. And the primary goal of contact tracing, of course, is to identify folks who have potentially been exposed and provide them with guidance and education on what they can do to prevent further spread. And we do our best to identify, of course, locations of everywhere everyone's been. But this data is incomplete, so you just have to keep that in mind as we review this information. Next slide, please. We continue to make great progress around our vaccination efforts. So around 42, 43% of our county's population has received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Out of that, 179,000 people, 128,000 people are fully vaccinated. Today, we are at the Clackamas Town Center, and tomorrow, lots of appointments are actually still available. So we are promoting that heavily with partners, with the public, through our social media. This will actually be the first time where we're seeing demands this week slow down a little bit. We'll actually be offering walk-up, no appointment necessary today. It'll be our first trial doing that. So we'll be promoting that heavily. We have staff and nonprofits that are getting the word out today that appointments are available. As long as you get to the town center before 6:00 PM tonight, you can get a vaccine. Next week, we have a very busy week of events. Lots of second doses are due, so we'll be providing those clinics around the county, our usual places in Malala, Sandy, North Clackamas, Oregon City. And then next week, on Wednesday, will be our first clinic up in Welchess, and that event is full. We're also working with all of our school districts the past week, as now we've been able from the state to receive the Pfizer vaccine locally, which is the only vaccine that 16- to 18-year-olds can receive, or 16- and 17-year-olds, I'm sorry. So we are actually going to be providing clinics at local schools with students, for students and their families, for folks who haven't been vaccinated yet. So next week, we'll be at Oregon Trail School District up in Sandy, in Oregon City, and then the others are to come later this month. Our goal is to have these local school clinics available before school gets out in June across all 10 school districts. As I mentioned last week, we'll continue to be monitoring our race and ethnicity data. So on the far right, you can see since the last time, two weeks ago, I presented this data, this is our progress. I'll say still a lot of work to do in this realm. The issues around just barriers to get appointments scheduled, to have more weekend and evening clinics is still a priority. We are continuing to convene nonprofits. We have about 30 culturally specific nonprofits that are helping work with county staff who have been assigned to really focus on equity and outreach. A lot of grassroots-level, neighborhood-level work, you know, word of mouth, talking to folks, sharing information and education about the vaccine, and getting folks connected to appointments. A lot of resources is going into that work. We have a work group with nonprofits that's meeting weekly, specifically focused on reaching the Latinx community, the Russian community, immigrant community, Muslim community, and the houseless population, just to name a few. And last slide, please, Christina. As we plug every week, our call center calls are going down. I think yesterday, we had 42 calls, which was pretty low for us. Usually, we're in the hundreds. So if you want to get an appointment and you need help with the technology, please call us at 503-655-8224. We're still open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. You can go on to our Clackamas County website. There are appointments on the website available right now. And then on the State of Oregon's website, the Convention Center is only going to be here for a few more weeks. You can now, you don't need to pre-register. You can now go on to their website. You can book an appointment right now at the Convention Center. So if that is an option for you, and you're able to get there, do it now before that resource is gone. And with that, I believe that's all we have prepared this week. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah. Thank you, Philip. That one slide, early on, you had up, showed the 27 cases of, you know, youth or school, and then 40-some-odd percent of the population of those outbreaks in that period of time. My question is, is there anything with regard from going from high-risk to extreme risk that would help throttle that or modulate that at all?
In general, I would say for every case that we identify, they have around five to 10 contacts. So a portion of those then test positive. So yeah, it definitely plays a factor. We're seeing, as we've talked about in the past, the school-related activities, so sports, extracurriculars, carpooling. So when I share that school data, that's what that's reflective of, that number there. So 27 outbreaks, many and more additional cases related to that.
Right, right. And the other one, too, that I'm kind of curious about, and, you know, I'm sure you don't have that at hand, it might be good to know from the time in which everyone became eligible, everyone 16 and older became eligible. I'd love to know what population are receiving, those age groups are receiving the vaccine. And I know, you know, it seems like almost every day I see young folks with, walking around, hanging out with one another with no mask and so forth, and yet that's the area or the age group that seems to be the spiking. So the other thing I'm just curious about is that age group is more reluctant to get the vaccine, you know, maybe we need to, again, increase messaging, and their parents and their family members to help encourage them to, you know, to either mask up or take at least one of the three, if not all, of the precautions that we've outlined.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, we can pull some of that data together, and then I think the next few weeks with our school, high school engagement, that's going to, the next few weeks, I can update the board, and that'll give us a lot of insights into any hesitancy within the younger population and what we are seeing here in Clackamas County.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Smith. Question for Nancy. The 2.7 million to help with our businesses, are we, what's our outreach with the business community, and how are we engaging on that, like what will work most effectively?
Yeah. So we are working on that. We are going to be working with the BRCs, the Business Recovery Centers on that, and how we're going to get that out. So Sarah Ekman is working with her team right now to figure those logistics out. So we don't have all the answers right now, but I think probably within the next week, and I'm going to be out, but Sarah will be working with Daniel on that. Oh, that's good. I was interested in the timeframe because the emergency is now. It's now, yeah. So making sure we can act nimbly to get those resources out to businesses that are struggling will be really important. So Philip, while you've been going, I've been doing, working on my calculator, doing math, doing percentages, trying to get a full picture of what we're dealing with, because we all know that children, at least right now, unless they're 16 and older, can't be vaccinated, but that's going to be changing. So I'm trying to get a sense of the 40, I think you said 42.4% of Clackamas County is vaccinated, of the population. Did you include children within that number or not? Or is that number, 42% of the people who are eligible to get the vaccine are vaccinated?
It's the entire population. So about 15% to 70% of our children aren't currently eligible. However, we are expecting, hopefully, next week, it looks like from the national news, that the FDA will approve the Pfizer vaccine for age 12 to 15. So that would, that would help increase eligibility around 5% to 7% or so. So that will be helpful.
Okay. So my, and I know Paul probably, or Commissioner Savis probably does these numbers as well, but if I just do my quick math, and you look at how many people there are who can get the vaccine, how many children there are in the population who aren't eligible right now, and kind of where we're at and vaccines are slowing down. So I'm getting very concerned that this, we are not going to have enough people vaccinated to reach what they call herd immunity. And I am interested in us being strategic and thoughtful about what does that mean, and how do we, we cannot continue with this yo-yo back and forth. I mean, in our county, restaurants are closed for indoor dining for one week, and now they're back. It's just, it's really challenging. So I'm just curious, where is our strategic thinking along this? And it's really a state issue. It's not just Clackamas County, but I would like to know, where's our strategic thinking? How are we participating in the conversation? And how can we set ourselves up for the long term? Because this virus, as much as I want it to say it's just going to go away or make it so it's not as impactful, if people don't get vaccinated, we are going to continue with serious challenges. So my question is, what are we doing to be thinking ahead? Like, where's the conversation?
Well, we have now began again having, Dr. Press and I having regular meetings with our regional counterparts and Oregon Health Authority leadership, which is great to have discussions around the risk levels and the challenges that you described. The state did share the modeling that they feel confident that with the amount of vaccines coming in, with, that we will see a plateau in our cases. We haven't in Clackamas County seen that dip yet. We're still, every week, a little bit more cases than the week previous. We want, we're hopeful that we can see those cases go down, and that, as the state said, that in the next few weeks, restrictions can continue to be gradually lifted. So that's still the hope. There is, you know, I'm saying vaccine clinics aren't completely filled. We have, it has been surprising in the past week to see how quickly this shift has happened, but there are still a lot of folks who want the vaccine, who have been waiting patiently to get the vaccine. And now it's about making it as easy as we possibly can for folks. Mobile approaches, partnership approaches, smaller clinics, medium-sized clinics like the town center. We're trying to use every tool in the toolbox. The pharmacies are going to continue to be a great resource for folks. So all, you know, I'm focused on just trying to communicate the safety and the effectiveness of the vaccine, that, you know, if, that is really one of the key actions that we can take is to get vaccinated if we want to move forward with the economy and things opened. That's what we need to do.
Yeah. And I understand that getting vaccinated is really important. The piece that kind of keeps me up at night that we haven't had information about, but anecdotally, I think we all see it, is when our economy isn't allowed to recover, the people that take the brunt of that are our frontline workers who are working in our restaurants and doing that work, and disproportionately, communities of color. And I'm just interested, is this part of the conversation? And maybe I need to ask, maybe Commissioner Schrader knows because she is part of the, of the region of, Commissioner Schrader, where are you? She's here. Just about with the governor's conversation for the economic recovery.
Right here.
Oh, there you are. So I'm curious if they're weighing that impact, because being laid off from your job for a week and then trying to get rehired, this is not good for our workforce.
Well, you should have. I did ask Tracy to forward you the notes from the last Regional Solutions Meeting that we had where we discussed this issue. And so hopefully, you will have that in your inboxes. If you'd like to have a further discussion on it at a more formal level, a work session, we could do that. From my perspective, I also know that we have gotten a conversation with the North Clackamas Chamber and other chambers throughout the county to affirm that they would like to be the folks who are primarily essentially helping to get the dollars out to the businesses that are suffering on the ground. Because the Business Recovery Centers have been incredibly successful, and they know, have a roadmap of where the money should exactly be going. So I think all of those things are in process right now. And again, I'm assuming you did get the email, and if not, I'll just remind staff to make sure they get it to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader.
Okay.
Any other comments for our presenters? Seeing none. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Nancy and Philip. Next is a board discussion item, addendum to and sunset of emergency housing declaration. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will tee this up.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. What you have for your consideration this morning is a first addendum to Resolution 202062, which effectively, if passed, would put an end to the housing emergency declaration. The board may recall that the emergency declaration for housing was first implemented in 2017. It was initially done to accommodate the Veterans Village project that we had in the Clackamas Industrial Zone. The scope and breadth of this emergency declaration was kind of unprecedented and remains to the day to be that. And what it does, it allowed for the government, in this particular instance, to not only commit to the standard mutual aid agreements and things along those lines and redirect funds. What it did was it suspended competitive bidding and procurement processes, which is a process that public entities are required to follow under state law absent an emergency. It also authorized county staff to explore acquisition, temporary or permanent of purchase, lease, or otherwise site suitable for sheltering various housing situations. It waived Clackamas County code regulations, administrative rules, and fees to the extent necessary and possible to respond to the housing emergency, and it also had a catch-all emergency measure. So the housing, the Vets Village was successfully implemented, and it remained successful to this day. And the current emergency declaration is set to expire on August 1, 2021. What this addendum would do, it would terminate it effective immediately were this board to pass this addendum to the resolution today. Are there any questions for the Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll make a statement on this as well, but gee, though, my light board has lit up. Christina, who's in the queue?
Commissioner Fisher.
Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, I would just like to request that my colleagues join me in requesting a pause on this effort. Housing homelessness is in a state of dire emergency in our community, and us simply removing a declaration does not mean that the emergency is gone. We must remain vigilant and hear from our community on, if we do take a step like this, we've received multiple emails from people in the community, and we, at a minimum, need to study this issue and would encourage another Commissioner in joining me in requesting a policy session. We have a homeless services measure that is going to be, we're going to be receiving funds for that, and we, as a commission, need to make sure that we have all the tools in our toolbox to execute that funding as soon as possible. The voters expect this problem to be addressed with the resources that they're going to be paying, and it's much more in our current state that we need to deal with effectively. So with that, I'm hoping another Commissioner will join me in requesting a policy session to study this and that we take the time and dedicate the energy to address this appropriately.
Thank you. Commissioner Schull, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Madcor. In the last 11, 10 months since this was signed into effect, do we know how many instances of competitive bidding were involved? In other words, how many times was a competitive bid waived in light of the emergency declaration? Commissioner Schull, that's an excellent question. I cannot answer that with any specificity. I do know during the Veterans Village, there were some expedited procurement processes to allow that to happen quickly and nimbly. I was just consulting with Rod Cook, H3S Deputy Director or Interim Director, and Dan Johnson from DTT about how many times this board or county staff have used the emergency declaration over the course of the last three-plus years, and we were really unable to ascertain how many times that was actually used. Okay. Thank you.
I can answer that, Commissioner Schull. The answer is zero. And if it has been, then staff has violated the declaration, because every instance of this being used has to be notified to myself as administrator and you as the board of county commissioners, and I've received zero notice it's been used in the last year.
Okay. So I understand that if we rescind this, then that's not going to have any negligible effect. negligible effect on, on that issue, right?
I, I would say, yes, negligible effect, I would think. We have processes in place already, but moreover, over the course of the last year and a half, Clackamas County has become pretty adept at adopting emergency declarations, and we're one to present itself, let's say, winter warming shelters or something along those lines during our winter months. This board would be able to swiftly and decisively engage in that conversation and declare an emergency if necessary.
Yes, and one last question. If this is rescinded, and we do have a situation that requires a new emergency declaration, how long would it take for us to put that into effect?
Thirty minutes or less.
Thank you. Chair?
Yeah.
I move to approve the addendum two and sunset of emergency housing declaration.
Do I hear a second? I'll second the motion. We can have further discussion on this. Commissioner Savas, you're in the queue.
Yeah, well, as we discussed on Tuesday when this came to us, and I will say, you know, probably for purposes of the public and everything, that it was probably a surprise or, you know, abrupt. And I express concerns surrounding that in the sense that I don't want people to misinterpret that somehow we're messaging that this is no longer an emergency and, you know, that that we would have some kind of a companion, call it a declaration resolution, that we're in a housing crisis. But, you know, I think, I'm going to step back a little bit and just say that when I read the declaration and which boxes are checked, you know, I think we have a lot of kudos to hand around to everyone, staff, nonprofits, and everyone for actually, what's the word, normalizing, institutionalizing. We've done a lot of this stuff and we're doing it, and if, if the administrator is correct, and I'm not doubting that he is, that we have not used this declaration, then it seems to me that we ought to be discussing how we, you know, if, if and where we need to put more emphasis in the normalization, in the administration of some of these activities in which are cited here in the declaration. So I think there's value in the discussion of going line by line, and if this is not the place, this is not the place, and I would, you know, perhaps join Commissioner Fisher because on Tuesday, that's what we both discussed. We both discussed having a work session on this, and my, my thoughts now, my thoughts then are the same. Go over this item by item and talk about how we normalize this, educate our public so they know what's going on, but it seems like there's currently a little bit of hysteria with some of the emails I received and the phone calls I've received with regard to somehow that we're, this is no longer an emergency, and of course, that doesn't make any sense to anyone, and/or that somehow funding for nonprofits or activities of nonprofits would cease, I mean, the moment we rescind this. And apparently, that's not true. Is that correct, Gary?
Not true.
Okay, it's not true, okay. So we're in front of that. However, I do think there's value, and so Chair, if, is there a willingness on your part to go line by line on these today?
Commissioner Schrader, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Savas, we have other Commissioners in the queue who have not spoken yet.
I have a question.
No, we're not going to do that today. And there's a motion on the table, and I would ask you to respect the fact there are two Commissioners who have not been heard on this topic. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith. There's been, I had an opportunity to meet with a number of pastors yesterday, and this was on the books before this particular issue has come up. So I'm just going to tell you, what I have picked up on is there is a lack of clarity from them as to what this means. Essentially, we really did move forward with this for the Veterans Village because it was a unique situation. And they are feeling that when we're saying, okay, we're going to not do this anymore, we're saying that, well, there's no longer an emergency. That is not, absolutely not what we're saying. I think some clarification has to be made in that one of the issues may be that the procurement process has not been, the procurement process and how we contract with our nonprofits, okay, has to be clarified. Because, this is a question for Mr. Madcorp, under the emergency ordinance, does that mean that we do not have to follow all the protocols for procurement and contraction of services? Because one of the issues we have to think about is transparency because of the dollars that we're going to be getting from the federal government in terms of dealing with all of our emergency issues. So could you clarify that, Mr. Madcorp, for me? What does it do to what would normally be done to a contractual process with a nonprofit that we would generally work with to help solve some of these social issues?
I will try to address that, Commissioner Schrader. All governmental entities in Oregon are subject to public procurement requirements. We operate under the local contract review board rules. It's competitive bidding. It usually means low bid on certain things. There are exceptions. What this emergency declaration did, it suspended the standard competitive bidding procedures to obtain necessary goods, services, and/or equipment utilizing the procedures in Clackamas County Contract Review Board rules. So it suspended those rules temporarily. I do not believe this is going to impact or impair nonprofits' engagement with the county or any other funding stream. They would all remain eligible. It would just be through the regular contract review process as opposed to the suspended process. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Schrader.
Commissioner Schrader, you're muted.
You should be. We're going to wait for Commissioner Schrader to get her technology in order.
I'm mute. No, I, there's multiple conversations going on here at this point, some background noise. But I think the concern is that with this emergency declaration as it stands now, that again, we want to be transparent in how we're doing a procurement process, given the amount of dollars that we're going to be receiving as an entity from the federal government. It doesn't mean if we don't move forward with this, that, that the nonprofits are not going to be getting the dollars that they need to do the work that we want to collaborate with them. It's just not suspending a regular procurement process. So my suggestion would be to maybe come up with an emergency declaration that says we're still in an emerging, you know, emergency housing situation, but maybe that piece of it, in terms of not suspending procurement processes and the allocation of money should be removed. Does that make sense? I mean, we're not, we're not saying we're not, there's not an emergency, it's just, given with the amount of dollars that we're going to be having funneled to us, quite frankly...
I can add some, I can add some information on that.
Yeah, it would behoove us to dot every T, you know, well, dot every I and cross every T.
And I don't disagree with that, Commissioner Schrader. I'll speak on this issue now. I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding regarding the effectiveness, or in this case, the non-effectiveness of this emergency declaration. There's been a lot of fury created, which I believe is wholly inaccurate. Take a look at our COVID declaration that has been in place, how long, Gary?
Oh, 15 months, 16 months?
15 months. That COVID declaration allows for emergency housing when, at, when we need it at a moment's notice. Also, we do not need emergency declarations to create warming shelters or cooling shelters. Those can be done quite nimbly as we have in the past. I believe that this declaration has been used to get around the proper and safe planning process that we have in place for all people, regardless of their affiliations, whether they're nonprofits, builders, or otherwise, to go ahead with our housing initiatives. Clackamas County is going to be receiving a lot of money from Metro, about $20 million. And this emergency declaration would bypass the thoughtful, creative, and deliberative process to spend that $20 million, and I think that is wholly inappropriate. Because Commissioners, it's the tax-paying citizens who are paying that $20 million. They should be allowed to come into the procurement process as well as the decision process where housing needs to be cited in our county. We are moving ahead with Metro on the $20 million process, and we submitted our LIP a couple of weeks ago, that is, the Local Implementation Plan. Thank you. We also have other considerations that I believe that this board has not done, and it's time that we roll up our sleeves and start doing the hard work. And we had staff present last week to us on our zoning laws to create more available land to build exactly the type of housing that this emergency declaration has asked for. We currently do not have an availability of land to meet all the needs in the county. We will be reviewing that as we are separating out important segments of that, and the first action that needs to be done on this is to let this sunset occur today. House Bill 20001, as passed by the legislature, has mandated that counties create middle housing opportunities. We will be slow, we will be surely deficit of that if we do not create the affordability of land to move forward on that. And like our administrator has said, this is a very poor way to manage our housing needs as we go forward. It takes 30 minutes. Now, that's not to say if Commissioners want to hold a policy session, when we can get it scheduled, to look at our housing needs, but I will submit to you, we have had multiple policy sessions where we have discussed housing and its needs. We are moving forward with that with our housing authority. And I will say to our nonprofit agencies and our churches who are concerned that the money will go away, that I can assure you, it will not go away. As a matter of fact, you might find more opportunities if we can deliberately and thoughtfully, through the procurement process and within the laws that have been already passed in this county on zoning and land use, you may get more allocation because not all nonprofits can handle the influx of our housing needs that are sure to come. We have had multiple emergency declarations, and the Commissioners know this, I'm speaking to the public now. At one point within an 11-month period, Clackamas County was under three emergency declarations, first for COVID, then for wildfires, and then for the ice storm. I submit that emergency declarations should be set aside exactly for that. What this housing emergency declaration attempts to solve is a societal problem that has existed for years and will continue for decades unless we take a look at our housing needs, our homeless situation, and our transitional housing as we all have discussed. I believe we all are on the same page with that, and I would be happy to discuss this further with any other Commissioners, and I see there's a couple of lights on. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, well, Chair Smith, I, you know, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, I know we all come here ready to go to work. I came here Tuesday, ready to roll my sleeves up. I came here yesterday, ready to roll my sleeves up, and I'm here today and requested that we discuss these item by item, but apparently, if we're not going to roll our sleeves up, I'm ready. I'm not figuratively going to do it, I'm actually going to do it. I'm going to start rolling up my sleeves, and I'm ready to tackle this.
Gary, point of order, there's a motion on the table.
So I, therefore, I have no other choice other than to table the motion. I move the table to motion.
Second.
All right, that motion is allowed to interrupt the main motion, so now you can have a discussion and vote on the motion to table.
We will hear, we will have a vote on that. First, I see there's some discussion. Commissioner Scholl?
The staff of Clackamas County is acutely aware of our need to stabilize the housing situation of our unhoused people. They're acutely aware of Performance Clackamas and our intent to ensure safe, healthy, and secure communities. The rescinding of this emergency declaration will not reduce the county's responsiveness to the needs of the people of the county or to the requests from nonprofits and other organizations that want to assist to alleviate problems with the homeless. This emergency declaration does not truly affect the effectiveness and the intent of the county to help alleviate this problem with homelessness. Thank you.
Christina, is there somebody in the queue?
Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Schrader.
Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to have a few points of clarification. Number one, this board has been working on housing and homelessness for the entire time that I have been on this board, since 2017 and prior to that, convened a homelessness and housing task force, which came up with recommendations of which our planning staff have been working on, which was presented to this board. So we have been working on the zoning changes, and we will continue to do so. Number two, the housing for homelessness declaration has not been utilized because we've had other declarations, as Chair Smith has said, dealing with housing and homelessness, which have been activated to deal with the emergency. And third, I think it's only responsible public policy to table this now and hear from our public because it is essential that we build public trust through good government and are transparent and work with our communities and hear their concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I would submit to you the fact that the emergency declaration exists and it subverts our procurement and zoning processes anything but transparent. As a matter of fact, it is not transparent whatsoever. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Thank you, guys. The truth of the matter is this, I am very concerned about the level of transparency with the dollars. I am also concerned about bypassing regulations. I, I think that, however, in order to clarify this to our partnerships out there, that we should take a breather and have a further discussion with them because I think they are totally misunderstanding our intent. And that intent is, as we get a large amount of money, that we are responsible for. And at this point, in my opinion, having procurement processes that, that are not stable, that, that kind of muddy the waters is not a good way to go. I actually believe that Commissioner Smith, Chair Smith, has made an absolutely really good point about transparency and allocation of dollars. I don't think, though, in getting the sense from this commission that we are in consensus yet. So I would strongly suggest we take a breather from this where we can examine the optics and clarify to our partnerships what this really means.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, it's, if this motion to table is... If this motion to table is successful, it's my intention to bring back a work session to have this discussion, and I'm not saying anything different than I said on Tuesday. I said then that we need to have some kind of messaging that lets people know that we're still recognizing there's a crisis. We go over these item by item and help educate folks, and so there needs to be a parallel process. It's not about what we're doing. Frankly, it's about how we're going about it. And I think we are a political body. I think we can't be misunderstood or mis-messaged, and I think how we act, how we respond, and what we do, and how we go about it is our responsibility. So I don't think there's resistance to the effort you brought up, Chair Smith. I think it's the how.
Well, I'm disappointed, to say the least, because I'm doing this for transparency's sake. I still believe there are efforts, and quite frankly, staff and commissioners, there have been abuses with this. And so if you want, let me finish. And there have been. And I'm not about to call out anybody in this room for that. But we do need to roll up our sleeves and get to the housing and how we're going to spend the exorbitant amount of money that's coming in from the taxpaying citizens on this housing bond. I would recommend if committee, board, if you want to table this, we continue with our efforts on our zoning, we continue with our efforts on House Bill 20001, because that work must be done, and we continue with our efforts with the DTT staff on our zoning and the creation of more land to put our middle housing initiatives, our affordable housing initiatives. And frankly, creating more land, we have the ability to do that for everyday citizens who find it impossible to afford to buy a home. And that would be our first-time homebuyers and our retirees. And that's really what's at issue today. Was not seen, any other commissioners? There's a vote coming up. Christina, please call the poll on motion to table.
Excellent. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will say that there has been quite a concerted effort of misinformation and disinformation on this email campaign, and I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate trying to take this particular initiative, subverting our procurement and spending process to supply some people's political agenda. There, I said it. There is another motion on the table, Gary. Does that go away with the motion to table?
I believe it does, because you moved to table. The original motion is now moot, so there's no need to vote on that.
Thank you very much, Gary. What's up next?
All right. Next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask Christina to please read the consent agenda by title only.
All right, we'll start with health, housing, and human services. Number one, an approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, Department of Consumer and Business Services, Oregon Insurance Division, Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance, Senior Medicare Patrol, and this is a total revenue of $10,000. There are no general funds involved. Number two, approval of a Community Development Division 2021 Action Plan, application for $2,253.17 in the Community Development Block Grant Funds, $1,6,963 in home funds, and $192,629 in emergency solutions grants funds during the 2021 program year. No general funds are involved. Approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services to provide rent assistance services. This is for $1,204,804 of COVID rental assistance funds from the state and federal grants. No county general funds are involved. Number four is approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide rent assistance services, $325,297 of COVID rental assistance funds from state and federal grants. No county general funds are involved. Under Department of Transportation and Development, number one, approval of a contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the South Central Point Road and New Era Road Intersection Realignment. Construction contact, contract total contract value of $1,010,101.1. County Road Fund, House Bill 2017, safety. No general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a contract with Murray Smith Incorporated for the design services for the 2022 paving packages. Design contract total contract value of $570,778. County Road Fund and Community Road Fund, no general funds are involved. Under the Finance Department, number one, approval of a parking sublicense agreement with Weston Investment Company LLC, doing business as American Property Management for the Clackamas County Justice Court. This is a monthly payment of $140 and will be paid through the justice court fees and fines. No general funds are involved. Under elected officials, number one, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, number one, approval of purchase HPE Aruba network switches for access-layer networks in county buildings. The total purchase price is $231,209.97 allocated from the Budget Capital Fund within Technology Services. And last is Community and Emergency Operations Center. Number one, it's for emergency triage, treat, and transport model medical triage line funding opportunity. They may receive up to $1.175 million over a two-year period. No match or match required from the General County Fund, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has made a motion for approval. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Christina, hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's up next?
Public communication next, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have two cards in the room from two people who have showed up in person, and after that, we will entertain the Zoom. This portion of the agenda will be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the public testimony. The first person up is Les Poole. Les, please state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone, and I want to thank Chair Smith for pointing this out. And this, obviously, folks can't see on TV, but this is the public testimony pamphlet. And that was put together initially in 2012 during a pretty difficult time here at the county. There was a lot of commotion. And during 2012, not only did this get refined, but during 2012, we started doing evening meetings once a month, and we're doing them again. I appreciate that the board and the chair are doing that, because we hear calls for transparency. We just heard comments about confusion on an issue for the public out there. There's a lot of confusion, and that comes from an uninformed, unaware public, and it comes from the anxiety of our times. So it's very important that public awareness, regardless of involvement, public awareness goes up. And I don't know how we get there, but I know you know my message. And again, I appreciate everything that's being done so that residents can appear here and be heard. Something I want to touch on today is I would encourage folks to watch Mr. Weir's comments last week. Very troubling, very troubling. And certainly, they are county business. They're not partisan. One might think they're political. But he's raised questions that demand action by the county. And while I am not personally taking any legal action or here to pretend that I'm a lawyer, the bar for action has far been exceeded by what Mr. Weir has exposed. And I will again make a very strong personal request that the county, that the staff, whoever would be appropriate, look into what's been going on since early January and take action so that the residents don't have to do it themselves. We're in a time where we need government trust, don't we? And that trust has been violated, and it's been violated in a partisan attempt to overturn an election. That's my opinion, and I think that opinion is well-founded. And I have yet to receive a response to a very reasonable question, and that is that Commissioner Fisher or any other person who has accused Commissioner Scholl of inappropriate activity or actions or comments since he was elected, please provide them. Please provide them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Les Poole. Up next, is it Charles Gallia? I'm not sure I pronounced your name right, sir. You can correct me.
That's correct.
Please, right here. Please come to the microphone, state your name, your residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Charles Gallia, and I live in Oregon City. I'm here, Commissioner Smith, Chair Smith, and commissioners, I'm here today to address a concern I have that's related to some observations that were shared at your work session or the policy session. As elected officials, you're given a stature and a sense of authority that extends beyond sometimes what background you might have. So when assertions are made, they're often taken by the public as fact. One of the concerns that I heard was regarding the impacts of race and poverty, and that there wasn't any distinction among races. I've shared with the county administrator one of the most recent reports from the federal government on poverty and race, and it highlights the distinctions between whites, blacks, and Hispanics. It's very clear that race impacts poverty and the other way around. The institutional barriers are the result of racism, as well as simply race, interpersonal behavior, as well as the structures that produce poverty. Poverty extends and continues because of institutional barriers, employment barriers, education opportunities, geography, and other social determinants. As a policymated king body, I'm not here to lecture you or point out anything, but being guided by misinformation is what results in bad public policy. And I would hope that you would correct the record and make sure that you understand that race is affected by health and as well is, the CDC has recently said that racism is a public health crisis, and those things taken together should influence your decisions about ameliorating those differences. And I would hope that that's the policy and direction that you would take, to see that those are differences that are important to address. And that's really the end of my comments.
Thank you. Christina, we have people online who've called in.
Yes, I have.
And how many do we have?
Four people registered.
Thank you very much. Christina, you will moderate this portion.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I will go ahead and start with my registration list. We're going to move on to Chris Waller. Chris, go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Stettings Lodge. Yesterday, Pamplin Media published an article titled "Leaders Correct Record on Mark Scholl's Homeless Comments." I hope that you all read this information from actual experts in the field, but there is some information that this article didn't cover that you should be aware of. Mark Scholl has been openly defying public health advice and putting vulnerable members of the community at risk. As I emailed you on May 1st, he promoted an anti-mask rally in Oregon City where protesters marched down Main Street, intimidating anyone wearing a mask. On April 25th, Commissioner Scholl attended a large party in Vancouver, Washington in direct violation of state guidelines, calling for indoor gatherings to consist of no more than 10 people. Extensive photos and videos documented that no one at this party wore a mask, and there was no social distancing. I emailed you all evidence of this on May 3rd. The very next day, Commissioner Scholl, Oksana Bell, and her friend Angel Sokolova visited homeless camps in Multnomah and Clackamas Counties. Again, no masks were worn, despite their attendance at a potential super-spreeder event the night before and the fact that they were interacting with a vulnerable population. Photos and videos of these people were then posted on Support Mark Scholl, a Facebook site set up by Oksana Bell, as well as on her personal site, without the permission or knowledge of the people involved. Several people with knowledge of homeless services in Clackamas County, none of whom can reveal their names due to fear of retribution, which is in itself a sorry reflection of the dysfunction of our county, have contacted me. They have been unanimous that exposing vulnerable people to COVID and violating their privacy for a political opportunity is inexcusable. For someone who serves as the face of this county to be so openly disdainful of public health and human decency is appalling. And Mr. Scholl, you openly lied about me at the Tuesday meeting. I am not Sonya Fisher's associate. As I have told you and your accomplices many times, I have never spoken to Sonya Fisher. We have never exchanged any emails about your Facebook posts or your recall, other than the initial letter I sent to all commissioners. Sonya Fisher is not a member of the Facebook group working to recall you. If you feel the need to attack a woman, at least attack the right one. Your colleague, Sonya Fisher, is the wrong target. Call off your dogs. Thank you.
Up next, Christina.
Up next is going to be Michael Weber. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Christine. Michael Weber, Oak Grove. If one bothered to read beyond the salacious headlines in a reputable newspaper on Monday, one would discover that Mr. Dave Hunt, a prominent Democrat, was charged with a misdemeanor late April. Mr. Hunt has a right to due process and is presumed innocent until found guilty. The system seems to be working. Mr. Hunt took a leave of absence from his position on the College Board. The College Board has said they will carefully review the matter and take appropriate action that best serves the interests of our community, which they communicated to Chair Smith before Tuesday's meeting. While this isn't the time or place to discuss that matter, and I'm happy to see that calmer heads have prevailed, this is the time and place to discuss what I witnessed Tuesday, which disappointed, but sadly didn't surprise me. What I witnessed was a chair who, upon reading the news, seized the opportunity to abuse her position and authority to attack and hurt that prominent Democrat. Perhaps she thought this was some sort of retribution for what she felt was unfair treatment of Commissioner Scholl. Perhaps she felt she had a score to settle with Mr. Hunt. What I do know is that she moved very quickly early What I do know is that she moved very quickly early Tuesday morning to force this item onto the agenda before knowing all the facts, and that more than 25 minutes of precious Commissioner time was wasted on this issue. She seemed unreceptive to a majority of the Commissioners' opinion of what to do about the matter. For example, a strongly worded letter about community values and how that related to Mr. Hunt's alleged actions, rather than a premature call for his resignation and removal from all county business before he even had his day in court. Chair Smith appeared to need to strike while the iron was hot before this opportunity slipped from her fingers. She appeared to want to serve as judge, jury, and executioner. Most egregiously, she publicly conflated the name of the Portland Police Bureau's Human Trafficking Unit with Mr. Hunt's alleged actions. Mr. Hunt's charges had nothing whatsoever to do with sex trafficking. To even imply that Mr. Hunt was involved with this type of activity is slanderous and beneath the dignity of this body. And Chair Smith, before you publicly call me a liar again, just because you don't like being criticized, I suggest you re-watch the video. Although there may come a time in the future where it is in the county's interest to pursue this matter, it is not of urgent concern today. Unfortunately, once again, Chair Smith put her own private and partisan interests above the needs of the county. Thank you.
Up next, Christina.
Up next, stop that, is going to be Bill Ware. Bill, go ahead and unmute yourself. You have, uh, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Ware, Damascus. I had an opportunity to watch the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion LETIC emergency meeting from January 19, 2021. I found it hard to understand what it was about at first, or why, much less it was an emergency meeting. So I thought it best to determine what it wasn't about. It was not about advising the Commission with this group's finding about Commissioner Shoal before the Commission vote to censor him. It was already done four days before. It was not about becoming informed about Mr. Shoal's alleged mean postings. Most hadn't read them. The opening speaker said as much and added it was good, it was now, quote, "discovered," unquote. It wasn't about evaluating and discussing Mr. Shoal's written apology. Besides, as one mentioned, it was on the web if anybody was interested. It wasn't about reaching out to Mr. Shoal to perhaps exchange views with him and even maybe reconcile perceptions, as one member warned, quote, "Don't fall into the forgiveness and forget trap." What it was about, it was a political power play to brand someone a racist on commission, and he must be taken down. It was about setting a trap by demanding he come to them for training. One observed, "If you feel guilty, you'll come; if not, don't." It's kind of like heads we win, tails you lose. It was about vindictiveness and punishment. One taxpayer-paid employee, a member of the committee, said, quote, "I hope he resigns and can't sleep at night," unquote. It was an inflated group importance and group promotion of their committee. That same taxpayer-paid employee said, "We couldn't get Trump to resign." And it was also said, "We need to be better at vetting." They felt sophisticated enough to presume him unqualified for office, as if they have greater wisdom than the common sense of the voters who put him in office. There was a fleeting moment of clarity where one person in the group thought they may be viewed as communists and that they wanted him brainwashed. But alas, it was only a passing thought. A coordinator posted on the county site, quote, "I believe that in order to truly advance EDI efforts, it's important that we take off our name tags, put our titles aside, and be human with each other," unquote. But of course, only for those whose view life through the lens of a politically woke activist that demands everybody be servants to the interests of diversity. Thank you.
Up next.
Thank you, Bill. So it looks like we did have Anna Hoesley. She was registered, but she is no longer online. And then that is the end of the list.
Okay, Gary, what's up next?
Next, Commissioners, is county administrator update, and that's me. I'll start with an item I'm seeking your ratification for, a contract I signed on your behalf under the County Emergency Declaration 2020-14, the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration. It was a contract for disaster management that I signed on May 5th, 2021. It is a memorandum of agreement between Clackamas County and the Oregon City School District for COVID-19 vaccinations and drive-through clinics. There is no monetary value, except the county will pay for any expenses to return the facility to pre-use condition. If that does occur, CARES Act funds will be spent. No general funds will be used. The agreement lasts until terminated by either party. I'm seeking your ratification of that contract I signed on your behalf.
I move to ratify.
Seconded.
Commissioners, Savas has moved to ratify. Commissioner Shoal has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Christina, would you take the poll, please?
Of course. Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. And some good news items I'd like to share with you. First, our behavioral health staff within our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department is teaming up with the Oregon State Parks Department this month to raise mental health awareness. Our staff is collaborating on new social media posts every Monday for the next four weeks. The posts, which are also placed on the Oregon State Parks social media channels, encourage followers to be mindful of their mental health. So thank you to our Oregon State Parks staff and our Health, Housing, and Human Services staff for this outreach to our communities. Next, a member of our Transportation and Development Team, Plumbing Inspector Tom Miltonberger, received high praise from a member of the public, which I'd like to share with you. This member of the public wrote, "Tom did our inspection on Friday and denied me, but he provided a ton of helpful feedback. We did the rework this weekend, and Tom came back out and signed off with approval. He also gave great advice on how to set up for success when we move forward on the rest of our project. Tom was polite, timely, thorough, and helpful. Super appreciated. Inspectors often get a bad rap, but my Clackamas County experiences have been good." Thank you. So thank you to Tom for excellent service to our public. That is my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. That's certainly good news. Now it's time for a Commissioner communication. Commissioner Shoal, you're up first.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you for the folks who took their time to testify today. In response to one of the callers, I do wear my mask. I got both my shots. But I do not eat, or drink, or dance with my beautiful girlfriend with a mask on. That, those I cannot do. Okay, today, on tolling and congestion pricing. Last week, Commissioners Savas and I were on the Zoom meeting with I-205 and I-5 Toll Projects Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee and with Hannah Williams, Community Engagement Coordinator from ODOT. I recommend residents of the county visit www.oregon.gov/odot/tolling. Look at the website, learn what's going on, and make your opinion heard. On schools. Last week, I had a briefing from Shannon Kometic, Director Angels in the Outfield, a nonprofit providing hope for children impacted by crime and abuse. They helped over 1,672 children in Oregon last year. Shannon agrees that our children must return to school immediately and that we can expect counselors and teachers to be overwhelmed with a high number of problems when they do. Learn more about Angels in the Outfield at angelsintheoutfield.org. On homelessness. Yesterday, I received a briefing from Monta Knudsen from nonprofit Bridges to Change. His organization is working on housing the homeless as well as providing peer support, mentors, and mental health and drug addiction recovery support. Critical help needed by the county. Bridges to Change offers permanent and transitional housing in the region and operates three recovery residence properties in Clackamas County, the Alfredine House, Evening Star House, and Holcomb House. And there are vacancies. Learn more about what they can do for somebody you might know at bridgestochange.com. On my visit to homeless encampments last week, let me clarify some confusion in the press. I said the homeless people I met were from Portland. I did not say all homeless people were from Portland. I said the homeless people I met indicated they were all involved in drug use to some degree. I did not say all homeless people use drugs. I am confident that the people of Clackamas County can learn from the mistakes of places like King County, Marin County, Multnomah County, and others by using assets from county government, nonprofits, churches, and the business community to bring shelter, relief, and security to our homeless people, thereby giving them a hand up to empower themselves, to improve their lives and the lives of all of us. A hand up, not a handout. Personal responsibility leads to personal action, which leads to personal pride, self-respect, and dignity. On the internet, last night, the Commissioners had a town hall on the problems of rural connectivity. I better understand the need, and I fully support our Clackamas broadband and the value of work they are doing to connect our rural residents. Thank you very much. And then on veterans. This morning, I visited the American Military Encouragement Network on Southeast 115th and Clackamas.
Is your microphone on?
I just turned it off. Sorry about that. The, this morning, I visited the American Military Encouragement Network on Southeast 115th and Clackamas. AMEN, for short, is a nonprofit supporting needs of veterans with food, financial aid, job search assistance. This morning, they loaded out hundreds of pounds of food onto many trucks for distribution to families throughout the region, to include a truck headed to the Grand Ronde Reservation. There were about 25 people there, all working hard to make good things happen. Thank you to Phil Blake, President, for the tour. This afternoon, I have a site visit scheduled at the St. Vincent de Paul Council to learn more about supporting the needs of the homeless and our needy citizens. To all residents, to all churches and nonprofits, visit the Clackamas County website. Scroll down to the $81 million American Rescue Plan, where our county staff is asking for your input and ideas on how to best utilize that money. And if you have a nonprofit that can help with homelessness, mental health, and drug addiction issues, and I have not met with you yet, if you would please contact Caroline Hill here on the staff, I would like to get on your schedule and meet you. And finally, a thought for the week. We must not assume it is impossible just because we find it difficult. Instead, recognize that if we, that if it is humanly possible, we can do it. It can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yeah, well, just want to remind everyone, probably no surprise, that it's now May. We have four months of 2021 behind us. We have eight months of 2021 ahead of us. And we have a, this is a new commission. We've been working together for four months and a week. And it's not uncommon sometimes after our work sessions or our business meeting to get a phone call or someone tap me on the shoulder and say, hey, you know, by the way, here are my thoughts about this meeting, or that meeting, or that topic, or this topic. I really believe that, number one, people are watching. People are perceptive. People can pick up on things, and they can pick up on the tenor of our meetings and how we treat one another. I think it behooves us not to recognize that. I think we ought to just take a step back and think about how we're going to work together and make sure we can do it in a respectful manner, not a disrespectful manner. Whether you read the current news media that's taking place on virtually every topic from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and just look, and look at what people read, how things are perceived, what's printed, what people's thoughts are. We have control of some of it. We don't have control of all of it. But, you know, I'll just take this whole resolution or this declaration, or the emergency declaration, for example. If people misunderstand, we have to ask ourselves, I'm not saying we're to blame, but we have to ask ourselves, did we message it right? Was our approach right? Could we do it better? You know, and, you know, be humble about it. You know, we're not perfect. We don't expect to be perfect. I don't expect anyone in this room. I don't expect perfection. Like, all they expect is the effort. And being humble about it, and just stepping back and figuring out, how can we just do it better? We're servants. We're servants to the public. We have to recognize that. So I, my message today is, and I, all I wanted to say this. A couple of weeks ago, on a Thursday, Commissioner Schrader made some comments about, you know, really about being humble and realizing we're not, we're not perfect, and to forgive, and all those things. And that's just a, and I, I really valued that. I thought it was a brilliant statement that Commissioner Schrader made. I try to follow that myself. And I really think that we ought to just set our, set aside any differences or inhibitions and learn how to work together as a commission. We owe the public that. We owe our staff that. I'm just concerned about the morale of everyone, whether it's the five of us, or our staff that work directly with us, or the people that are watching us. I'm very concerned about the morale. I think we can do better. I'm just hoping the next eight months are not like the last four months. Those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Thanks, Chair Smith. Well, the other day, I had the opportunity to speak with the Land and Housing Cohort Faith Community. And that was a group that was on my list to talk to for quite a while. And at the time, I just really wanted to talk to them about their faith community, their housing work, and things of that sort. And that's when I mentioned, when they mentioned their concern about the housing issue, the housing emergency declaration. And what I said to them is, of course, I will talk to my commission about that. But from my perspective, I really believed that people were getting overly concerned about potential things that might happen if we don't, we didn't keep with this emergency declaration. And I actually really want to thank Chair Smith for bringing this up because the intent has been perfectly clear. It's not that we are saying there isn't an emergency with housing. What we're really trying to say is, as we get more dollars coming in from Metro and the federal government, that it's going to be very important for us to be transparent and accountable with those dollars. And we have to be very, very clear. I think that's the point of what we talked about, and I think that's the excellent point that Chair Smith made. We have to be very careful that we spend these dollars wisely. It's not that we don't think there's a housing emergency, but we really are going to have to go through procurement processes that everyone in the public can see and understand and agree to because that's the way that we are mandated to do business. So thank you, Commissioner Smith, for bringing this up. I appreciate the fact that it was a difficult topic. And as Chair, you, you've never been afraid to hit the nail on the head with things. And I've always admired that. So kudos for that. And I can assure our public and my colleagues So kudos for that, and I can assure our public and my colleagues that this entire commission, all of my colleagues, are committed to fair and equitable and affordable housing for the constituents of this county, and that as colleagues, that we will get there. In any case, that's about it from me this go-round. I have the opportunity, as you know, to do some virtual work where I'm getting to see my grandson every day, which is kind of one of the joys of my life, and I also want to thank my colleagues for valuing that as much as I value that. And so I'm going to follow Commissioner Scholz with a comment here that I just saw that I'd like to remind everybody, and it's from the author, Isaac Asmanow. Your assumptions are your windows on the world. Scrub them off every once in a while, or the light won't come in. So to our nonprofit friends, I would say, please, 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 don't make assumptions because we need to be working with, together fully and transparently and in the light. So thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I really appreciate my colleagues and their thoughtful comments today, especially Commissioner Savas giving us the charge to say we need to work better, we need to do better, we need to, you didn't actually say this part, but I'll say this. We need to have the lens of how, what the impact of our actions and our words are on not only each other, but our staff and the larger community, and to be thoughtful in how we make decisions and deliberate. I really appreciate you bringing that up, and hopefully, we will work with, as we get through budget, work with, we had talked about having a retreat, and I've, I know I've talked to Gary about us having a retreat. Maybe we will be able to do that when we get through budget and better solidify our working relationship and our interfaces with members in our community. I also appreciate bringing up the issues of homelessness and housing. It has given me the opportunity to look at and review just some of the data on how urgent the issue is. And Vaheed Brown had reminded me, or had told me quite some time ago, that about half of our renters in Clackamas County are red burdened, and that is still true today. If not for an eviction moratorium based on COVID, you know, 56,000 people in the region are less than one paycheck away from homelessness. So there is a definite urgency, and it is truly the high cost of housing that creates this compressed situation, that creates this crisis. So I appreciate Chair Smith bringing up that we need to increase the supply of housing in the region. We have a lot of work to do, and we must be thoughtful, we must be transparent, we must also be nimble and responsive to the incredible need. I want to just state that perception is reality. We cannot do our work in our community if we do not have the buy-in, the allegiance, the camaraderie with our community. So we need to work on this. This created a storm of concern of trying to remove an emergency, and we need to take this moment and make a stronger alliance with our community and greater understanding. So I can't let my Commissioner Communication, what is it called, the soapbox, Gary? Soapbox end without really appreciating my colleagues and the hard work that this commission has done and previous commissions on studying the courthouse. As walking out of the meeting yesterday after we approved, Judge Steele had some tears in her eyes, which inspired me to get a few tears in my eyes because there is such a tremendous need. And I don't often talk about what it's like to practice law in a courthouse, but as most know, I've been an attorney since 2003, so I've had my moments, not many lately because I've been focusing on commission work, but where you just struggle in the courthouse, current courthouse, to find a private place to talk to a client about very sensitive issues. Or you're sitting with a client who is there for a restraining order, and the perpetrator is just far too close for comfort. Or you're just simply needing to resolve an issue for a family, and because there are not enough judges, because there's not enough space, you got to bump that trial again, and those families do not have resolution. So we are on the path of making sure that we are taking care of the fundamental needs of our community, and that is to provide a space for justice, because justice delayed is justice denied. And I really want to thank Commissioner Savas for holding us to task yesterday on the numbers because he framed, he forced me to frame for myself, what is the value of transferring the risk? He pushed on those numbers and pushed us all to study harder and to look more closely of how important is this? We must provide our essential services within our existing resources. And by golly, this county, under the leadership of our county administrator, found us a pathway through where we can do this in a way that moves us forward, and that is a tremendous accomplishment. So I want to thank all of my colleagues from the bottom of my heart and from the bottom of the hearts of our constituents that we have accomplished this very important step. And then lastly, I want to do, I'm doing a call to action right now. I need, and I have a feeling you're all going to say, yes, we are all aligned with this. We are not through this COVID pandemic emergency. I think we have some of the most brilliant staff in Clackamas County that can help us best frame our advocacy, and we are now no longer at extreme risk, we are at high risk. I do not take for granted one iota of the importance of our strong voice. We have got to find a way where we have a stable environment for our businesses and for our workforce. I want to really emphasize the workforce is really important, that we support our workers in Clackamas County while, of course, promoting the safety and promoting vaccination so we can do the best we can. But we're going to be at this for a really long time. We've got to find a stable way through this. So let's push our best thinkers here so that we can have the strongest voice possible, and I would appreciate an aligned voice when we talk to the governor's office, when we talk with our fellow elected leaders around the region. We are leaders in this space, and let's continue to be strong. And with that, I will, I think I'm the last before Chair Smith.
Have you finished, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to say that here at Clackamas County, we are experiencing some very exciting opportunities that never before experienced in the county. Yesterday, we ended a 40-year discussion about a courthouse and have decided to move forward. And some people criticized me for my actions, that I'm moving too fast. Well, we had to move fast on that particular item because we have a 50% match by the legislature to help pay for the courthouse, and how often does a government ever get 50% to help pay for a building? It was important that we take advantage of that. We're able to build the courthouse without increasing taxes. And why is that, people ask? Well, the reason why we're able to do that is because staff over the last year, and I attribute Gary and our new finance director, Elizabeth Comfort, from taking the time and the diligence to roll up their sleeves, take a look at the budget that has never been looked at before, and put in accounting procedures that all of our departments are using now, and it saves money. We will have an opportunity with the model that we passed, it's called the P3 model, that we do not have to start making payments until July of 2025. And that gives this commission or whoever is serving on the commission time to figure out how to set their priorities and what they want to spend their money on, keeping in mind that we will have mortgage payments coming up starting 2025. There's going to be a sweet spot between the year 2025 and 2029 where we'll be making payments on this building next door and the courthouse, but after that, the debt on the building next door will have expired. So I think it's very exciting for that. We continue in our efforts. We are looking at a lot of initiatives. We have never, ever had the type of money coming into this county than this year with the bond from the Metro Housing Bond, with the transportation initiatives, right and left, the COVID relief money, which is desperately needed by our citizens, and if anything, I am very strident in the proper management of our monies going forward and the tried-and-true government legal procurement processes. And that's why I brought forward the sunset of the housing emergency declaration. And I will continue on that. However, commissioners, please don't be so single-minded in that you cannot complete other good business of the county while you're stuck on that. You will find coming up in our policy sessions, more housing initiatives like House Bill 2001. We're going to work on our zoning. We have more issues on zoning coming up. So I would encourage you to keep your eye on the ball, continue with the agenda that has been so thoughtfully and peacefully set forth by myself, Gary Schmidt, Stephen Magcor, and staff. And there's a reason why we bring up policy sessions when we do, because we look at the year ahead, at what's before us, what's mandated to us that we don't have a choice to do, and the money's coming in. Thank you very much for attending today's meeting. The meeting is adjourned.